Good evening. Welcome to the December ninth meeting of the Aiken City Council and our last meeting of the year. If you're inclined, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief Franco, if you lead us in the pledge, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I will review the guidelines. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, discipline, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, please, and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address counsel, speakers should limit their comments to the subjects being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from counsel are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protam Edjirdo for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
The Christmas tree is lit and we've had a Christmas parade, so it's officially Christmas. Thus, I wore my very special Christmas tie, which used to play music, but it died. I don't know how to put a battery in it, so that goes from there. Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, so I present that as a motion.
Thank you. He presents it as a motion, and do I have a second, please?
I second that, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll seconds the motion. All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. The minutes were provided to counsel for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes? Councilman Walts approved, uh, made the motion. Do we have a second? And Councilwoman Price seconded the motion. Any comments or changes? All in favor. Thank you. Motion passed. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a presentation by the Aiken County delegation. Senator Young, would you come up to the podium with other members of the delegation? Thank you.
Mayor Milner and members of council and esteemed guests and members of the public that are here tonight, I'm honored to be here. I'm Senator Tom Young, and I'm joined by members of the Aiken County Legislative Delegation, including Representative Taylor, Representative Bill Hickson, Representative Melissa Oremus, and Representative Charlie Hartz, and Representative Bill Clyburn had told us he was coming, and he may, he may come in any minute now. And anyway, we are honored to be here tonight. We appreciate you accommodating us on your agenda. We are here tonight to present a recognition from the South Carolina General Assembly to one of Aiken's native sons. We have not had many mayors in the city of Aiken, as all of you know, especially Mayor Milner, in the, in the current capacity. You go back to, I think, pre-World War II, or thereabouts in the 1940s, and Mayor Milner is the fourth mayor in the city of Aiken. I believe that's right. And her predecessor was Mayor Rick Osmond. And Mayor Osmond, as I said, is a native of Aiken. He's a native son. He's a third-generation business owner here in the city of Aiken. He served as our mayor in Aiken for eight years. Prior to his service in the city of Aiken as mayor, he was on county council, where he served for another eight years. He was the vice chairman of the county council. He has been very active in our community because of his leadership and his recognition as mayor and, and, and his service on council. He is held in great esteem by his peers across the state. He was elected as the chairperson of the South Carolina Municipal Association for 2022, 2023, and we are honored to present him tonight. If Mayor Osmond would please come forward. We are honored to present him tonight with a recognition from the South Carolina General Assembly that commends him for his many years of service to both the city of Aiken and to Aiken County, and recognizes him for all that he's done to make Aiken County and the city of Aiken the great place that it is, that everyone in this room, those watching live or on tape, know that this is the best place to live in South Carolina. While he was mayor, the city of Aiken was recognized as an all-American, or I mean, I'm sorry, the Southern living city. The all-American was under Mayor Kavanaugh. But we have continued to meet the standards of the all-American city, and we continue to do it with the leadership of this council. And we're just honored and proud to be here tonight to recognize our friend and our mayor who served with distinction in the city of Aiken and served as the vice chairman of the Aiken County Council, Rick Osmond, graduate of the University of South Carolina at Aiken, the father of three fine children and the husband to a fine wife, Angie, who works at the University of South Carolina Aiken. Mayor, we're proud to be here tonight, present you with this recognition and thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I? I, I just want to, first of all, thank the delegation. This, this is quite a surprise for me. I mean, really, I had no idea. But, but I, I want to say to you and council, thank you so much for your service. I mean, as you know, it's, it's an honor to serve this city, and I know it's not always easy, and sometimes maybe we don't say it to you enough. But thank you for the great job you're doing, Mayor. Thank you for the great job you're doing. And I just, just, we, we just want you to continue to do what you know is right, serve the citizens of Aiken. And I know greater things are ahead for us. So thank you and God bless, and may everyone have a wonderful Christmas.
Thank you. The next presentation is by the city manager on the city's Hurricane Helene recovery status. Mr. Beanbo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and everyone. I would like to give an update on the hurricane status as of December ninth, 2024. We have cleared the following areas since my last update. Aiken Estates, Barnard Avenue to Price Avenue, between Two Notch Road and Whiskey Road, most of Jim Lakes. To date, we've, we estimate approximately forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six cubic yards of debris have been collected by city staff. Contractors have begun grinding and hauling operation at the city's debris site to handle this tremendous amount of debris. This site is at Citizens Park. A reminder that because of contaminants in the storm debris, we are not able to offer mulch to the public, or nor are we able to use it unfortunately for city-related purposes. The city of Aiken's intention is to continue to collect storm debris as long as it is needed, with the understanding that tree work continues. When we are ready to resume regular yard debris pickup, the public and council will be notified in advance. Our con, one of our contractors, SDR, continues cleanup efforts currently in Woodside. SDR has collected forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-eight cubic yards of storm debris through December eighth, 2024. DOT contractors continue to work on state roads in Calmia Hill, Crosland Park, and Banks Mill Road. SC DOT contractors are not providing the amount of debris collected within the city limits to us. Between the, what the city and the SDR has collected, there have been over ninety-three thousand five hundred cubic yards of debris collected. Recycling pickup resumed our normal schedule last week, the week of December second, 2024. That is red weeks and blue weeks, and I believe this is the red week. It's the red week. So last week was blue, this week is red, and next week will be blue. So that's back to normal, and I thank the hard work of our public services staff to make that possible. Contractors began paver repair in our downtown business district. Christmas at Hoplins will proceed on schedule with the expected opening date of December fourteenth, 2024. FEMA is operating a disaster recovery center in Aiken County through at least January seventh, 2025, at Mount Zion Baptist Church at one seven five one nine Atomic Road, Aiken, and it's open Monday to Saturday from eight AM to seven PM. This disaster recovery center provides in-person assistance to those affected by Hurricane Helene. To date, we've spent over nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars on hurricane-related expenses, not including payroll. Also, we expect in the coming week, or in the coming weeks to, as we finish these areas, I mentioned, the city staff to move into areas. Next, we expect to go into areas around Hickory Ridge and also into assisting DOT contractors in Calmia Hills and Highland Park. So those, and then the first pass will pretty much be substantially done. We will continue doing a second pass and then additional passes if necessary. One thing to be on the lookout for, please look at the city's social media pages, Facebook and Instagram, and the city's website. We'll also send it out to the media that we will ask that, a final call for storm debris, so to speak, to be put out. That date has not been decided yet, but that is forthcoming. Since this is our last scheduled meeting for five weeks, sometime between now and our next city council meeting, we will be putting this out and, and publicizing it greatly. Again, it's not going to be, we put it out today with the final date the next day. There'll be plenty of advance notice, but that, we will be beginning publicizing that between today and the next city council meeting. Now, if I may, Madam Mayor and council, and those in attendance, I would like to recognize someone from the United States Small Business Administration, the Public Affairs Specialist Field Operations Center, East Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, Mr. Antoine Harris. And Mr. Harris is here with some information that we would like to publicize, both via this method with him making some remarks, as well as providing links on our social media and, and website and via other means. So, Mr. Harris, welcome, and thank you for taking time to come to share some important information to our community.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, members of the council, Mayor, thank you for having me here. This is my first time in Aiken, so thank you for the warm welcome. And what I wanted to do very briefly is just sort of tag on to the city manager's report to give an update from the U.S. Small Business Administration. As you all may have known or do know, that we've been side by side with our federal partners here throughout the state. So we're talking USDA, FEMA, and so forth during this disaster declaration, number two oh seven oh three is what we call it. And so what I really wanted to do is give you a quick update on some numbers for the state, specifically for the state of South Carolina. As a total, we have had over fourteen thousand applications for disaster assistance, and throughout all of the declarations from Helene, and we're talking, this is eight different states, we've had close to a hundred and thirty thousand applications. So a lot of widespread damage across states that I didn't even know I would be going to, such as Illinois. So that just shows you how far it's reached. What we have are disaster loans, and we have several different types. We have one for businesses. So if there was physical damage done, and I won't get into the details too much because I don't want to belabor this, but if there is physical damage done to your business, we have a disaster loan for that. One, if you, if you didn't have physical damage, but let's say you had to close, you have a restaurant, and the refrigerators went down, you had food spoil. If you were a food bank and you lost a lot of your reserves, we have loans that would cover any of those losses. We also have disaster loans for homeowners and for renters. So if you have a renter in your property and any of their personal property was damaged, they too could be eligible. As the city manager mentioned, January seventh is our deadline. We are at that DRC that FEMA has at the, you said it was Mount Zion Baptist Church, correct? We are present there as well, and again, throughout the state. So, a couple of things I just want to highlight about our program. A, it's a very low-interest loan. There's no obligation to take the loan if you are approved, and also there is twelve months, no interest, and there's no penalty if you pay it back early if you decide to accept it. So it's, again, it is a loan to help. You don't have to file an insurance claim to, to afford this, you know, to apply for this. So again, it is just something to help supplement in the case that, you all know, any businesses, nonprofits, anyone that could benefit from this information, my ask is that you just pass this on to them. Chambers, I've spoken to chambers all across the straight, across the state, from Greenville to Columbia to Charleston about this. In fact, I have a meeting with the city of Columbia Office of Business opportunity tomorrow to talk to them about spreading this information to, you know, their constituents and so forth. So all I ask is that you continue to help spread the word and keep up the good work with the recovery. Thank you. Any questions for me before? No? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Excuse me. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of thirty minutes. Mr. Dewar.
Dick Dewar, one thousand six Belle Reve Drive in Aiken, House Lake North. At the November twelfth council meeting, a comment was made that the city was not providing documents required by plaintiff attorneys in the Pascalus lawsuit. Two members seemed surprised and voiced strongly that they supported providing all documents and indicated they would do so in the executive session scheduled after the meeting. Apparently, it'll change, and only a few documents have been provided, most of, most of which are public already. I want to suggest to city council that if you're truly interested in providing documents to plaintiff attorneys to settle this suit, that at your next city council meeting, you pass a resolution waiving attorney-client privileged documents pertaining to the Pascalus lawsuit, and direct your primary attorney to promptly release all non-attorney-client privileged documents, including emails and other such documents. Now, at the last meeting, a comment was made that legal fees associated with the Pascalus lawsuit might be as high as five hundred thousand dollars. When challenged, the person making the comment stated that this was an estimate based on two years of attorney fees. I think city taxpayers should know the total cost so far, so I asked Mayor Milner to direct the city manager to provide a report by the next city council meeting, five weeks apparently, of total legal expenses associated with the Pascalus lawsuit. The report should list the attorney's names and invoices by date that have been paid or submitted for payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Kurt Johnson, one one four Brewster Way, Aiken, South Carolina. Usually I come up here and I'm a little on the downside because of everything that we got going on in the city, but today, I, I actually, what they talked about was Mayor Osborne servitude. That's what we need, and we've got it in this town. This is an all-American town, and they, the community really does come together when we have needs out there. I, I have nothing but praise for that. I've been here ten years, and every time we ask for something, we normally get some feedback from it, and that is one of the biggest things. This last week, we were able to help probably thirty people, just off the generosity of the community. It's just, it's, it's very heartwarming to see that, and this isn't just because it's Christmas time. These people come around because they know that it's the right thing to do. One of the biggest things that we find with the, with the homeless is that the community usually doesn't see them, and when they do, they get a little nervous about them, and I understand that. I spent, I'd spent my time on the street. I mean, I was one of those people, and you, you don't understand everything that's going on. The mayor and I have talked about this. We need to be better educated, and that's one thing that we want to do. We want the community to feel comfortable. If they have to come to us, that's fine. We don't care, but we don't want them to feel like they're in danger every time they see somebody that, that's not like them. So I, I want to thank the city again. I want to thank the mayor for the boots the other day. They were, they were a blessing to that young lady, and for the jackets, and for everything else that this community does, for our less fortunate, unsheltered, or underhoused people. Like I said, we've got a lot of kids that are in, in school that are, are couch surfing. So we, we- So, we, we can do more, but we are so thankful for what we have. So, that's what I got to say. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Harris Hocker? And Ms. Head. Good evening.
Hello. We're here today because you awarded to us the Jackson Petroleum site.
My name is Hillary Head and I live at 215 Dupre.
Oh, Christian Harris Hocker, 215 Berry Road. And we just want to say thank you foremost. And as we stated, we want to start that process with a design charrette. And we kicked that design charrette off today. And over the coming days, we're going to develop the plans for this project further. And we would like to invite the community and especially the city council to be part of that, especially at you. As a neighbor and the rest, mayor and city manager, please come over. We are meeting at Aiken American.
The African American Center for History, Art and Culture. And, and we are holding an open session tomorrow, Tuesday at 1 o'clock. We know a lot of you all may be busy, but then also on Thursday from 3:00 to 4:30. And we'd love to see you all and hear your input and have you meet our wonderful architects who are here with us tonight. Lauren Kelly and Eric Moser and, and hear your input on what we think is going to be an awesome development at Jackson Petroleum.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Nobody else? Thank you all. We move to approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees and commissions. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. There are no appointments for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting?
Mayor, I would like to renominate Brooke Thomas for the Equine Committee.
And there I have several to nominate. The first one is Ahmad McHale. Ahmad is, is on the Design Review Board and he, he is up for reappointment. The second one is Brenda Lynn Jenkins-Bosman. She serves on the Energy and Environmental Committee and I am recommending her for reappointment. And the third one is Leela Wolf. Leela serves on the Equine Committee and I'm representing, I'm recommending her for reappointment. They all have agreed to be reappointed to their committees.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to Annex 111 Jefferson Davis Highway and zone it general business. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance to annex property located at 111 Jefferson Davis Highway and zone the same general business GB. This is an approximately 96 hundredths of an acre parcel. The property is at the intersection of Hitchcock Parkway and US 1 Jefferson Davis Highway. And the applicant is requesting this annexation and zoning to general business for an oil cha, a quick change, oil change business. The planning commission at their November 13th meeting, all those present unanimously recommended annexation and zoning general business. And that the property is conveyed to the applicant within 180 days or the annexation's null and void. And council heard this on first reading at the November 25th meeting and it is before you for second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to annex this property?
Madam Mayor, this connects very closely to District 2 and my motion is that we approve this on second reading.
Councilwoman Price made the motion. Do I have a second, please?
Madam Mayor, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Second.
Councilwoman Gregory seconded the motion. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to Annex 2122 Pine Log Road and zone it RS 10 Residential Single Family. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance to annex property located at 2122 Pine Log Road and zone the same residential single family RS 15. It is an approximately two-thirds of an acre parcel. The recommended zoning is consistent with adjacent single-family residences. The, all those present at the planning commission meeting on November 13th unanimously recommended annexation and zoning to RS 15 and council heard this and passed it on first reading, November 25th. And it is before you tonight for second reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to pass this ordinance?
Madam Mayor, since this is adjacent to my district, I will make the motion to accept this.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion and I need a second? A second from somebody?
A second, yeah, sure.
A second from Councilman Girado. Are there any comments from the public?
RS 10 or is it RS 15?
That's what I wanted to ask.
I may have misread it and it is RS 15 is, but yes, it's proposed RS 15. So, the, yes, RS 15.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kirk. Keep us straight. Comments from council? Corrections made, I guess? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. The final item under old business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the 2024-2025 budget for the Community Development Block Grant Fund and Franchise Fee Fund. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance amending the budget to the City of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025 for the Community Development Block Grant Fund and the Franchise Fee Fund. We heard public comments earlier about the property from Jackson Petroleum that is slated to close December 20th. And we are also purchasing the parcel at the airport and that is slated to close later this year, before the end of the year. I believe we're looking at closing December 17th and this is, requires a budget amendment and it is before council for second reading this evening.
Thank you. A motion, please, to pass this?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the motion.
I'll second, Madam.
And Councilwoman Broll seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. We now move to new business. We have one item under new business this evening. It is the first reading of an ordinance to accept the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance accepted, accepting the fiscal year 2023-2024 audited financial statements and authorizing variances to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget ordinance. Our auditor, Malden and Jenkins, we had a presentation this evening at our work session. And the audit was presented to you. It is required by state law and city code that the City of Aiken have an audit of their financial statements each year at the conclusion of each fiscal year. Our year runs July 1st through June 30th. Please to report that we received an unqualified or, or as we know colloquially, is a clean opinion with no material weaknesses nor instances of non-compliance material to financial statements. And Grant Jackson is here tonight from our audit team to answer any questions you might have that you, or excuse me, Grant Davis, that you might have had since the work session. And this is before council for first reading this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Mayor?
Councilwoman Gregory made the motion and I need a second?
I'll second it.
Yes, Councilman Girado seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council?
Madam Mayor, I just want to state that Grant, Mr. Davis, did a very comprehensive job in going through the audit process for us and the strength that our team has in terms of the city's revenue base. And we thank you for that detail, Davis, along with our team for the job that you are doing for us. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And, and if I may add, one thing that was illustrated, certainly given in light of the weather event we had with the hurricane, the fact we do have, unlike other communities, we didn't have to issue any tax anticipation notes or do any sort of borrowing to immediately go out and address issues affiliated with the storm. We have the money on hand and also have the comfort knowing, of course, that will get reimbursed by FEMA and the state at later dates.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. We now move to petitions and requests. The first is approval of the extension of a lease with the Aiken Community Theater and Friends of the Best Friend for use of the Old Playhouse Building at Virginia Acres Park.
Thank you. We've had several discussions, Mayor Milner and council with you and with the, the two groups. It began with a work session in September 2024 regarding direction for the Old Playhouse Building in Virginia Acres Park. That's the prefab metal building that's located at the, near the intersection of Price Avenue and Two Notch Road. And at the time, we were recommending demolition of the building since it was in need of repairs. The community theater requested that we allow the lease to be continued. But they, because they had no other place for their youth wing to meet. It was also noted that Friends of the Best Friend LLC had contacted the city and were looking at you, a facility in this building met the bill for them to preserve artifacts of the railroad, the best friend that ran from Charleston, South Carolina to Hamburg in the early 1800s. They're going to be removed from the woods and displayed eventually at the, what is now the Aiken Visitor's Center and Train Museum at the intersection of Park Avenue and York, and Union Street. After council discussion, it was requested that we come back with a proposal for work to be done to the building and allow the Friends of the Best Friend to look at the building. And after some discussion, which I felt like was a good three-way partnership, we can share use of the building, have a two-year lease agreement. There are some repairs that it costs not to exceed $5,000 that could be split by the three entities. The leasor, the city paying a third and the friends of the best friend paying a third and the community theater paying a third. Any utilities that are expenses that occur during the terms of the lease will be paid 60% by the theater, 40% by the friends. And if any additional repairs beyond this initial $5,000 are needed, that will be the responsibility of the two leases, Friends of the Best Friend and the community theater. So, therefore, we have this before council this evening for consideration at, as, in the form of a resolution to execute said lease agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion to execute this lease agreement, resolution to leave?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the motion. I have a second from Councilman Waltz seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council?
I, I have to make a comment, Mayor, because you and I visited the location sometime back. And in visiting the location during the summer, I left there personally with one recommendation and one decision. But after hearing those individuals that are involved with their presentation, that lead me to, led me to a different direction personally. And then in learning that there were others that came together and said, this is how we can make use of this facility. And that's in relationship with our staff. Because you can sit here and have one inclination, but until the team comes together, it's a teaming effort with this business that we do in, in our city. When the team comes together and bring their ideas together, working together, work. And Jessica and the team and the three partnerships that's included, this will work very well. I can't commend you enough personally for what you are doing in terms of working together, showing the spirit of what Aiken is all about. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I can speak for the, the, the youth wing. I went to see the latest performance and it, if this will help them at all, it was remarkable. They were very professional and it was a wonderful performance. So, hopefully this will help them out. Anyone else? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. The final item on our agenda this evening is approval of the proposed city council 2025 meeting schedule. Mr. Beedenbow.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have come to that time of the year where we must close the books on meeting in 2024 and look to schedule meetings in 2025. We have a proposed schedule for you that mirrors what we've been doing for a number of years, namely, meeting the second and fourth Mondays of every month, with the exception of not meeting on the fourth Monday in May, which is the Memorial Day holiday. July and December, no meetings the second, excuse me, the fourth Mondays in July or December. Otherwise, we are meeting second and fourth Mondays of the other nine months. Plus, we are proposing the New Horizons annual workshop to be January 31st, which is the last Friday of the month. And we are, that will be at Smith Hazel, at the newly renovated Smith Hazel. And this is before council for consideration this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from someone to pass this meeting schedule? Councilman Waltz made the motion.
And I'll second, Madam Mayor.
A second from Councilwoman Broll. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? The meeting schedule has passed unanimously. Thank you. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Good afternoon, good evening. I don't know what it is. Madam Mayor, everyone, how are y'all doing?
We're all in the same boat.
Like a stranger now. It's been so long since I've been to a meeting, but I've been in, out of town, Atlanta, taking care of my grandbaby. My daughter's been in and out of the country with her job, so.
That's fine. It is.
It's just me, okay? My husband's taking care of the grandbaby, but I miss you guys. But when I do come back in town, certainly I go back, I go straight to, with the young man addressed, my houseless people. Those are.
Your passion.
My people, okay? And so, two days ago, I was out there and I've been seeing, because I've been going back and two days ago, I was out there and I've been seeing, because I've been going back and forth, taking care, what I call taking care of socks, et cetera, food, blankets, water, whatever it is. We do have contacts with Quality Inn and also Hojo on the south side for hotels because it's cold out. And when you see a woman that's out there and I asked her how old she was, she was 76, I believe, in a wheelchair. And it's not that, they have income, social security, but it's just not enough to for housing. And so they asked if we could possibly find, you know, somebody wanting to do a board, a room. You don't see that anymore around here. So I told them I would check the best I could check, you know? So right now, these people that I'm talking about are right now in the Salvation Army, which is great. But of course, you know, you've got to come out definitely in inclement weather. It just depends on the person and whether, how cold you are. So I was able to go over to Hojo and get some connections with Reno over there. And he was able to get me two rooms and I just threw it on my charge because that's what we do as Aiken because we just pay out of our pockets for whatever is needed. And I think that's a blessing that we can do that. But I've just, you know, the young man here spoke about it and I'm going to always probably say something about it. But as I was out there, an elderly couple came out there and they were handing out sandwiches. And it just brought tears to my heart for them just to pull over and just bring sandwiches and drinks out there. And they even offered me one. I said, well, actually, I'm good, but I'll take a drink. But it was just so kind of them to do so. They were just riding around and saw that out there in the park. And so that was awesome to see. But I'm just hoping we could come to something, some kind of resolution because rent is so expensive, you guys. And I don't think there's anything under $1,100 from what I see out there for people to get. And when you're on social security or you're disabled, like I said, this woman, she's 75. I just couldn't bear seeing her out there as cool as it was. You know, it was good to me because I love cold weather, but I mean, I don't think I would like to stay out there in it if I had to. Only if I had to, I guess, but it's really heartbreaking to see. And then, like I said, you know, we all speak that Aiken is awesome. I wouldn't live anywhere else. I love Aiken, you know, but it's just so heartbreaking to see that out there. And I talked to a few of the guys because I want to know where they are. You know, why are you homeless? What's going on? You know, what made this occur? You know, and then you hear some of the stories and you go, well, that could be me, you know, easily. And as I said, these people are working. It's not like they're not working, the ones that I deal with. Because if you're not working, you don't want to work. I can't deal with that. You have to want to work unless there's some mental things going on, whatever. And, but they just can't afford anywhere to live. So it's just that if we could maybe come together some kind of way, you know, I talked to one of the guys over on Park Avenue wanting to do feasibly some container homes, et cetera, or something, maybe find some land or something. I don't know. We're trying to figure some stuff out. So maybe if you guys can think about it, you know, sleep on it, I don't know. But we need to figure something out for these people because everybody out there is not what we think. It's some good folk, it's some good folk out there and they're trying, but they just can't get, they don't have enough money.
Thank you.
That's all I need to say. Merry Christmas to you guys.
Thank you, Teresa. Teresa, Madam Mayor, let me just say that I speak with you almost every week and just listening to your outreach efforts, whether they are substance abuser, homeless, issues with children, you're there at the aid of these folks to be a listening voice and recommending some things. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But your philanthropy with these individuals is much to be admired out of your pocket. I know that you're doing some of this because I've heard from some of them. So thank you for what you're doing, but thank you is not good enough if we are not helping in some way, so. Exactly. So let's just hope that this leads to some, through God's grace, leads to some positive outcome. Where are we going?
I pray so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I can say Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Beedenbo, are there any items from the city manager this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I've got a couple of quick things. First, I call your attention to the article that's posted in the Issues and Updates Newsletter from November 25th. It features our Public Safety's use of drones to document storm-related damage and assist with measuring storm debris after Hurricane Helene. We are considered kind of the trend or the go-to agency for information about how to do this. We were, we've had drones for many years. And Chris Medlin does a great job coordinating that. We also have other certified drone operators, both at Public Safety and elsewhere in the city, including Daniel Williams, who's here tonight. And I want to remind council of a couple of dates that you'll continue to get some reminders about. First, excuse me, is next Tuesday, December 17th, which is the groundbreaking for our new water plant at 127 Gun Range Road, right across from the old water plant that sits on US 1. That will be at 2:00 PM. So we look forward to seeing everyone there. And also that following Friday, December 20th, at 12:30 PM at the HO Week Center is our annual employee awards luncheon. So we look forward to seeing you there as well. And that is all I have at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Could you remind the public about when the Colliers
Yes.
bids are due?
That's right. Proposals with, you know, the, all the, what you described, the cost and everything, are due to Colliers December 23rd, which is two weeks from today. And then we will be reviewing those. And we, meaning, well, certainly Colliers is going to review them to make sure they meet all the requirements. And then we will get council, the ones for consideration to potentially convey the property to one of those interested parties.
Thank you.
And one other thing, if I may add, I believe, have we set the date next January 7th for the Fairfield Street Bridge? Or is that date in flux? Okay. There's a very good chance around the time of our next city council meeting. And it may be before, but certainly in that window, after the holidays, after Christmas and New Years, we will have a public information session either here in this room or at the Center for African American History, Art and Culture for the Fairfield Street Bridge. As that is ready to get public input on from anyone in the public. And then those comments, if needed, will be tweaked to the plan. And then it will be ready to go to the Design Review Board for their review and hopefully their approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, Madam Mayor.
And Councilwoman Broll seconded the motion. Hope you all have a happy holidays. All in favor?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Passed.